That's like here. Did you notice smoke? He's got smoke on top of that wall. Well, I'm sure as much as I can. What time? What I'm hearing is we're here Tuesday, Friday, and Sunday. Well, I would say this is the end of the show. It's a cash flow thing, I get that. Yes, I do get that. Yeah, that's the thing, but right. I have no idea. You know, it's worse without an internet. He's applying for the radar. Last song, Blue. Day one. Guys, do do. You're not connected to it, is that right? I am shutting it down. Please wait. And we will start this over again. How are you, sir? Good, how are you? Wow, that's good. I feel good. No, I don't know, I just pray. I can't tell you. Oh, I don't know. It's long like up there. Good, how are you? Wow, that's good. I feel good. No, I don't know, I just pray. Yeah, I can't tell you. Long like up there. All right, so now before y'all start, I'm not trying to delay. What do you mean, because all these things are better than all the other things? Oh, yeah. Yeah, but if you want to read today, I'll just read by number three. Right? Right, yeah, well. All right, just go on to House Revolution, right? How are you, sir? We aren't doing this because they've already notified the governor. So what we're doing is just, hey, uh... Huh? Yeah, yeah. Well, at least they said so, right? Yeah. Right. Need to get up here? Come on in.
The hour of convening having arrived, all members will please report to the floor of the House and take seats. All members will report to the floor of the House. The clerk will ring the bell. All members will please report to the floor of the House and take your seats. We're about to have the afternoon roll call. The chair hereby calls this special session of the General Assembly, or the House of Representatives, to order. The clerk will read a proclamation from the Governor of Georgia.
A proclamation convening the General Assembly of Georgia in the special session. Whereas Article 5, Section 2, Paragraph 7 of the Constitution, the state of Georgia grants the governor the power to convene a special session of the General Assembly by proclamation, stating and thereby limiting the purposes of the special session. And whereas the regular session of the 2018 General Assembly adjourns sin et die on March 29, 2018. And whereas the governor has determined that certain purposes warrant the convocation of a special session. And therefore, by virtue of the power and authority conferred upon me by the Constitution of Georgia, I, Nathan Deal, Governor of the state of Georgia, do hereby convene the General Assembly of this state in special session on Tuesday, November 13, 2018, for the purposes and only those purposes specified as follows. To amend Act Number 3001 of the 2018 Legislative Session, the Fiscal Year 2019 Appropriations Act, to provide emergency funding to state agencies and local governments responding to Hurricane Michael, as well as providing for economic development and rebuilding. And to ratify the executive order dated July 30, 2018, and numbered 7301801 in the official records of the Office of the Governor, and provide for general law regarding taxation related to the subject of that executive order, and for general law regarding taxation as it relates to the recovery and rebuilding from the impact of Hurricane Michael. Given under my hand and the great seal of the state of Georgia at the city of Atlanta on this ninth day of November, 2018, Nathan Deal, Governor.
We'll now have the afternoon roll call. All members present will please vote green to signify their presence in the chamber, and the clerk will unlock the machines. Have all members voted? Have all members voted? If so, the clerk will lock the machines. Doorkeepers will please close the doors and keep them closed. Well, good afternoon. And welcome to the extraordinary session of the 2018 General Assembly. We'll begin our work here this afternoon, and we have some important work to do this week and over the next few days. We will begin our day with scripture reading and prayer by the chaplain, after which we will pledge allegiance to the flag of our country. It's my distinct honor to introduce the chaplain of the day today, a dear friend of mine. I often refer to him as my brother-in-law, because his wife is my sister, so I think that makes him my brother-in-law. But Minister Carl D. Johnson is our chaplain of the day, and I was telling him earlier that there's been a couple of other times when we've had, for various reasons, some tough sessions that come along. And I always think of Carl to sort of open it up, because Carl Johnson is a man of peace. He has a close walk with his Lord, and he is truly an inspiration to me and to many who know him. He has been serving in the ministry for over 25 years, and during this time has served in some key leadership roles in the local church, including education pastor and evangelism pastor. And he currently serves as pastor of Leadership Development at Peace Baptist Church in Decatur, Georgia. He earned a Master of Arts degree in ministry and a Master of Divinity degree from Lutheran Rice Seminary. He's also been a professor, adjunct professor at Lutheran Rice Seminary and New Orleans Baptist Theological Seminary, and is currently a PhD candidate in the study of Christian leadership. Born and raised in Cleveland, Mississippi, his endeavor to teach and preach the gospel and the holy scriptures has taken him literally all across this country and to various nations in the Caribbean and Central America. Now, what's important about him is not all of that, but he sure married well. And another reason I thought it would be good to have him today is today is Leisha Johnson's first session day as executive assistant in the Speaker's office. So give her a hand. And I am truly blessed to have her part of the village that takes care of me, so the head village keeper. They are also joined by a church sister, Dr. Sharon Atkins. Dr. Atkins, we're pleased to have you here today. You're going to enjoy Minister Carl Johnson, and I'm pleased he's here. He will bring the devotion and then will lead us in the pledge, prayer and the pledge. Carl Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Good afternoon, everyone. To Mr. Speaker, ladies and gentlemen, the House, it's indeed a privilege to be with you today as an agent of encouragement and inspiration even for such a time as this. I know this special session is being convened with heavy hearts as we grieve the loss of one of your colleagues, Rules Chairman, John Meadows. Our prayers are with the Meadows family, friends, colleagues, that the Lord will comfort him with all of the comfort that they need. Thank you, Mr. Speaker, as always, for such a gracious introduction. I'm always encouraged to be reminded of my beautiful bride. Thank you, Dr. Atkins, for accompanying us today. In honor of John, I want to encourage all of you to finish the good work that you've begun. There's a passage of scripture that speaks to this matter. The modern translation of 2 Timothy 4:7 says, "I have fought the good fight; I've finished the race; I've kept the faith." The Apostle Paul wrote these words toward the end of his life, and we're... The Apostle Paul wrote these words toward the end of his life, and we're encouraged by those words today not to let anything stop us from doing what we know we're supposed to do. John Meadows didn't. There's a funny story that illustrates John's determination to finish what he started. It's about a pastor and his barber. On one occasion, the pastor was sitting in his barber's chair getting his hair cut, and as usual, they would always strike up a conversation. The pastor told his barber of an upcoming trip he was about to take to Europe, and specifically to visit Rome. The barber said, "You gotta be kidding me. You going to Rome? That's the worst city in the world. It's dirty, the people are unfriendly, I can't believe you're going there." He said, "By the way, how are you gonna get there?" He told him the flight, the airline that he was gonna fly, and he said, "I can't believe you flying with that airline. That's the worst airline in the world. Didn't you see on the news last week? The plane fell from the sky into the Atlantic? And the service is terrible, too." He said, "Where are you gonna stay?" He told him in a hotel, he said, "That's the worst hotel in Rome. They don't wash the linen clean, the service is poor, and the food in that restaurant, don't even try it." He said, "What are you gonna do when you get to Rome?" The pastor said, "Well, you know, one of the things I'm gonna do, I'm gonna see if I can see the Pope." He said, "That's the worst idea you could ever come up with. Don't you know there will be tens of thousands, perhaps even hundreds of thousands of people clamoring to see this man? You'll be so far away, you can't even recognize his face." Well, needless to say, the pastor was a little discouraged after this conversation with his barber. He got out of the chair. Nevertheless, he decided to still take his trip. When he returned home, he went to get his hair cut, as he always does. He sat in the chair, and they began to talk, and undoubtedly, the barber said, "How was your trip?" He said, "It was a great trip. He said, "Rome was a beautiful city. It wasn't dirty, and those people were very nice to me." He said, "In the flight, I'll tell you what, it was smooth as silk, not any turbulence, and the pilot landed so well, I gave him a compliment and congratulated him when we touched the ground." He said, "That hotel was great, too. The linen was clean, the food was good, and the service was even better." And he said, "I gotta tell you this part, 'cause it was the best part of the trip. I even got an audience with the Pope, and I spoke to him for about 10 minutes. And during that conversation, we talked about all kind of things concerning the ministry, but right before the conversation ended, the Pope leaned over to me, and he whispered in a small voice, so no one could hear but me. He said, "Pastor, I've had a good time talking to you, but I've gotta be honest, that's the worst haircut I've ever seen in my life." This special session is gonna be accompanied by some frustration, fatigue, conflict, consternation, and it's already begun with some grief. And during this time, I want to encourage you to remember John. John fought a good fight, he kept the faith, and he finished the race. Only one week ago, he was even elected to a seventh term. And as I mentioned earlier, the modern translation of this verse says, "I fought the good fight." But the Orthodox Fathers translated it a little bit differently. They translated the first phrase like this, "I have fought the beautiful fight." What a paradoxical twist of a phrase. When you think of something beautiful and you think of a fight, the two don't seem to go together, do they? It's similar to a gentle giant, or a loud whisper, or a quiet storm. There's a story during the life of David that many of you are probably familiar with. It's the story of David and Goliath. While many see this story as a lesson of encouragement to the underdog to defeat the giant, there's much more to it than that. It's a portrait of a beautiful fight. There are at least three things that make this fight beautiful. These three things are inextricably tied to one another, and in many ways, they're inseparable. You should remember them. The first is to be prepared. The second is to be passionate. The third is to be purposeful. If you will be prepared like a gentle giant, be passionate like a loud whisper, and be purposeful like a quiet storm. The first priority of a beautiful fight is to be prepared. Many people are inspired by this story of David and Goliath, and one of the things that impressed them the most is his courage to even fight the giant. But I suggest to you, there's something even more impressive than that. It was his preparedness. You see, he approached this giant with nothing but a sling and some stones. Now, you've gotta think about this in terms of what he did compared to what we do now. The sling he had wasn't like what our children play with, the one that you draw back and pull. No, it was just one where he put a rock in a cloth, and he'd swing it, and so many revolutions prevented, and he'd throw it. Now, think about how accurate he has to be. This giant has on armor from head to toe, but he hits him in just the exact spot that not only brought him down, but it killed him. That's preparedness. He obviously had done that before. He obviously had confidence in his skill. But even at that, he brought four extra stones. Some theologians say it was for his other brothers, perhaps? I don't know. I think it might have been because he was subject to miss the first time. At any rate, he was prepared. There's a story about two men who challenged each other to a wood chopping contest, and they chopped wood all day long. And during the day, they took many breaks, and one of the men took every break he could. And at the end of the day, the man who didn't take many breaks, he looked and he realized that this man had chopped three times more wood than him. He said, "How in the world could that have been?" He said, "Every time I look, you were either eating a sandwich, or taking a nap, or taking a break. How did you chop more wood than I did?" He said, "Ah, you didn't notice. Every time I took a break, I was sharpening my axe." And that's the essence of preparedness. Here is the rub. When you're not prepared for somebody to disagree with you, you might respond in a harsh and angry fashion. Your grandmother would say it like this, "Pray for the best, but prepare for the worst." The second priority of a beautiful fight is to be passionate. David was not only prepared to fight the giant, but he had to persuade the King Saul to let him fight the giant on his own terms. Saul thought he needed his armor. Saul thought he needed his sword, and Saul even thought he was too young. David could not have convinced him had he not been passionate. Passion is what allows you to persuade people of your position. Passion is what convinces people that you'll convince yourself. Now, here is the thing. Passion is a drive, but it's a little different than a physiological drive. It's a psychological drive. The distinction is that when a physiological drive is satisfied, you don't want anymore, such as thirst. When you drink some water, you're satisfied, or when you eat some food, your hunger is done. But a psychological need, when it's met, it causes you to want even more. It's kinda like being in a zone. I've heard an athlete explain it like, when you're hitting every shot, it's like you're driving somewhere and every light is green. Something on the inside of you stirs, and you've gotta have more. That's passion. Not only does passion convince others of, that you'll convince yourself, passion causes you to see what others cannot see. Let me just simply say this briefly. Helen, in the words of Helen Keller, "The only thing worse than being blind is having vision, having sight but no vision." The third priority of a beautiful fight is to be purposeful. The contest between David and Goliath was a common way of selling issues during those days. Many times, when there was a dispute between armies, they would choose a number of men to battle each other, and that would decide the fight for the entire army, for either side. This is what happened with Goliath. He challenged Israel to send out one man to beat him, and if they would do so, the whole Philistine army would surrender to them. David stepped up to the task, as you well know, but David also recognized he was not just fighting for himself. The purpose for him to win the battle was for the entire nation. Purpose is what drives us. Rick Warren wrote a book over 20 years ago called The Purpose-Driven Life, and the first sentence in that book was, "It's not about you." Ah, some people can't imagine anything better than pleasing themselves. Here is irony. Finding a mission that's bigger than yourself is one of life's most satisfying gifts. Purpose is what gives meaning to life, without which all of us are simply hopeless. If you won on November 6th, recognize that your victory is not just for you, but it's for the people who voted for you and who you represent. Fight a beautiful fight on their behalf. In conclusion of this whole matter, let me just say this. Make sure the fight you're fighting is worth fighting. Then be prepared, be passionate, and be purposeful. I pray that God will bless each of you, as you convene on this session right now, that he would announce you with his grace, that you would be all that you are to be, that you will live up to the challenge that is before you, that he might receive the glory, and the people might receive the blessings. We pray in Jesus' name. Amen.
I plead allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Doorkeepers will unlock the doors. The Clerk will read the resolution establishing the order of business for the day.
Mr. Burns, under 59, moves to establish the order of business in the first part of the period unanimous consents. Introduction of Bills and Resolutions. First reading in reference of House Bills and Resolutions. Morning Orders.
Is there any objection to the adoption of the resolution establishing the order of business for the day? The Chair hears none, and the resolution is adopted. The Clerk will read a resolution, H.R. 1 E X.
A resolution to notify the Senate that the House of Representatives has convened, and for other purposes.
Is there any objection to the adoption of H.R. 1 E X, notifying the Senate that the House has convened? The Chair hears none, and the resolution is adopted. The Clerk will read a resolution, S.R. 3.
S.R. 3 by Senator Miller, of the 49th, a resolution to notify the Governor that the General Assembly has convened, and for other purposes.
Is there any objection to the adoption of the resolution, S.R. 3, notifying the Governor that the General Assembly has convened? The Chair hears none, and the resolution is adopted. The Chair appoints the following representatives to the committee to notify the Governor that the General Assembly has convened. The following representatives. Representative Rhodes from the 120th. Representative Rogers from the 10th. Representative F. Strachan from the 104th. Representative Silcox from the 52nd. Representative Blackman from the 146th. Representative Ballinger from the 23rd. And Representative Lurica from the 169th. First reading of Bills and Resolutions. The Clerk will read.
House Bill Number 1 E X. Representative Ralston, Representative Jones, Representative Burns. To be entitled an act to amend an act making and providing appropriations for the state fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2018, and ending June 30th, 2019, known as the General Appropriations Act.
Appropriations.
House Bill Number 2 E X. By Representative Ralston, Representative Jones, Representative Burns. To be entitled an act to amend an act making and providing appropriations for the state fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2018, and ending June 30th, 2019, known as the General Burns, to be entitled an act to amend the act making and providing appropriations for the state fiscal year beginning July first, two thousand eighteen, and ending June thirtieth, two thousand nineteen, known as the General Appropriations Act.
Appropriations.
Unnumbered House bill by representatives of the one hundred and twentieth, the tenth, and the one hundred and fourth, to be titled an act to amend, Chapter eight, title forty-eight, Official to Georgia Announcer relating to sales and use taxes, to ratify an executive order of the governor suspending the collection of sales and use tax levied on jet fuel.
Ways and Means.
Unnumbered House bill by the representative of the one hundred and seventy-first, to be entitled an act to amend, Chapter eight, title forty-eight, Official to Georgia Announcer relating to sales and use taxes, so as to ratify an executive order of the governor suspending the collection of sales and use tax levied on jet fuel for a period of time.
Ways and Means.
Unnumbered House bill by the representative of the one hundred and seventy-first, to be titled an act to amend, Article two, Chapter seven, title forty-eight, Official to Georgia Announcer relating to imposition rate computation and exemptions from income taxes.
Ways and Means.
Unnumbered House resolution, Representative Burns, the one hundred and fifty-nine, Jones, the forty-ninth, and Representative from the sixty-ninth, amending the rules of the House of Representatives and for other purposes.
House will be in order. The House will be in order. Chair recognizes Chairman Cooper to introduce the doctor of the day.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Good afternoon to all the members. It's good to see you back on this rainy and sort of very sad day. It reminds me that even though we often have our differences, that we are a family. And I want to take this opportunity to tell you that any time, if you pick up and ask for my cellphone number, there's been occasions when people needed a doctor, when we're not in session or the doctor's already gone for the day, or even when you've gone home and you need a specialist and you don't know who to go to, if you will call me, I will find one for you, even if it's an emergency situation. So please, I wanted to let you know that it is something that I do willingly to give back to this large family that I feel like I belong to. And it is my honor to introduce the doctor of the day today. It's Dr. Halton, and he's from Mississippi, but now he's a Georgian because he's been here a long time. And he met his wife, who is one of our colleagues on the other side, Dr. K. Kirkpatrick, who is now Senator K. Kirkpatrick, when they were both in school in the RSC East in Louisville, Kentucky. And Dr. Halton is an emergency room physician, and the best thing about him is that he saves lives. And I want to urge you, if you have a problem, if your chest hurts, or you have an unusually bad headache, or for any reason, please don't put it off and go down and see Dr. Halton or the other doctors of the day. Last year, can you listen to this, guys? Last year, one of the senators went down and she was having trouble breathing, and Dr. Halton listened to her and was alarmed, sent her to the hospital, and she had a pulmonary embolism. Dr. Halton saved her life. So please, if you think that there's something wrong, now, all through this session, and when we come back in January, please don't put it off. Go down and see our emergency room physician, or the physician working the doctor of the day. And with that, I am proud to introduce Dr. Halton.
Thank you, thank you. Thank you, Representative Cooper. I am indeed happy to be here. Please do come see me if you need me, but I would like to encourage all of you to get a flu shot. The director of the CDC recently remarked that the only thing that keeps him awake at night is fear of pandemic flu. Last year, we had almost eighty thousand deaths from flu, twice the normal amount. And on Sunday, we recalled the end of World War I, but there was also another event in nineteen eighteen, the Spanish Flu, which killed more than fifty million people worldwide. More deaths than World War I, more deaths than World War II, maybe more deaths than both, they don't really know.
Well, if that won't make you run and get a flu shot, I don't know what will. Al Williams and I are going to get ours here in a few minutes, I think, after that. We're now going on to afternoon orders. We're going on to afternoon orders. The chair is going to ask members that are within the chamber to please take their seats and give attention to the members in the well. The chair recognizes Representative Sam Park for an afternoon order.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Colleagues, I rise to just thank each and every one of y'all for all the love and support y'all showed my family and I earlier this year when my mother passed away. As Chairman Cooper said earlier, I believe that this truly is a family, and I'm honored and blessed to be a member of this family. And while I know we will have disagreements over legislative fights, as well as over the direction of our state over these next two years, I know that we'll be able to find common ground and work together for the benefit of our state. So thank you again for all the love and support, and I look forward to serving with each of you over these next two years. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Chair recognizes Speaker Ralston for an afternoon order.
It's been mentioned several times already that today is a, our hearts are heavy. We have lost truly one of the best members of this body, Chairman John Meadows. I have reflected all day long about so many memories. My first memory is that I sure am glad that I was speaker all the time that he was Rules' Chairman, because I had Earl Earhart and Calvin Smyrie say no enough that, I didn't know if, how he would say it, but I've heard it, and somewhere, I think, one year, he gave out caps that said, "Doctor No." But he was, he truly was great. I visited with him a couple of weeks ago, last time, and he said, "You know what? I'm not going to get over this, but I'm going to live till Election Day." And he did. Not only did he live, he got eighty-two percent of the vote last Tuesday in his district. That's how much they love him in Gordon County and Murray and the area he represents. John Meadows was a real individual. He had courage, he had integrity. There was nobody more solid than Chairman Meadows. I'll never forget the day that I asked him to be the Rules' Chairman. It was in a men's locker room at a golf course. Just true story. Chairman England kind of tricked him in there, and I was getting ready to leave to go to a fundraiser somewhere, and he was chairing the insurance committee at that time. And Lord have mercy, he loved chairing that committee. And I said, "I got something I need for you to do." And he's, I told him, and he's like, "Oh, no, I'm happy where I'm at." I said, "Well, I'm not." He said, "You're getting tough with me." I said, "I've been hanging around you too long." But we're going to miss him. He, he loved his family. He loved those grandkids, and he loved Ms. Marie. You know, there was a couple of sessions that, for various reasons, Ms. Marie couldn't be down here much, and we would send for her and say, "Please, God, get down here. We can't stand him without you here." But she was busy with little men and helping at the time of his birth, and, but he loved his family, he loved his community, and he loved playing golf, frankly. And he and his daughter and I talked this morning, and we figured that he got his days confused and decided he thought today was Wednesday, and that's why he went on to play golf in heaven this afternoon. But he'll be on the course tomorrow. But he loved this state, and he loved this house. He loved this house. He enjoyed being a part of the process here, and he, he made it better. And I told the majority caucus this morning that when he, he left us this morning, he took the best of a lot of things with him, including this house and me. I pray that he rest in peace, and I know that he is no longer in pain, and thank you, God, for that. May God bless him and the Meadows family. Thank you, Madam Chair.
The chair recognizes Representative Smyrie for afternoon order.
Mr. Speaker and ladies and gentlemen of the House, when the Speaker and I talked this morning, he suggested I say a word or two about John Meadows, and John Meadows was a good, good person. You know, it's strange when you get that early morning phone call. You know, you get that early morning phone call, you know what? Something is wrong. And when I got the call this morning, letting me know that our chairman of the Rules Committee has gone on to a better life, I just sit there in my bedroom, just reminiscing about the times that I have. The only two chairs of the Rules Committee here, Representative Earhart and myself, and I now forget when John, I became chair of the Rules Committee, I used to joke with him. I said, "Now, you won't talk to the Speaker, you won't be the first person that you talk to every morning, but you'll be the second or third person that you would have a conversation with." And I know y'all's relationship was very, very close. Speaker Ralston, otherwise than that, you would not have appointed him chair of the committee. So it's often stated, and I use this quote a lot, that you make your living by what you get. You make your life by what you give. You make your living by what you get, but you make your life by what you give. John Meadows loved this house, and he gave all and all and all to make it a better place to serve. Job well done. Faithful servant. Job well done. Mr. Speaker, I yield a will.
Chair recognizes Chairman Earhart for an afternoon order.
Thank you, Madam Speaker and Mr. Speakers. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you for this opportunity to honor my friend, John Meadows. John Meadows was an American hero before he was a hero to the state of Georgia. When he stepped onto those yellow footprints at Paris Island, John Meadows was a United States Marine, and he gave everything for his country as well. Truly a hero. He took those same footsteps when he came to this House of Representatives. John was that man who loved his family, he loved his Lord, and he loved this state, and he brought that to this house from the day he came down here. He was there for everybody in this house. I remember those first times that he and I interacted, and maybe at that time, and it's a small fraternity, this fraternity of no at times. I still remember the times I told Mr. Speaker Ralston, "No, that's the, that's the job," and nobody did it better than John Meadows. Our good friends, it's a small fraternity, isn't it, Representative Smyrie? And it's, it's something that he brought to this house, and his skills and his heart. Anybody that caught the short end of John's stick, sometimes it didn't feel like it, but that was one of the man, he was a man with one of the biggest hearts I ever knew. Again, his family, his little man that he talked about, he, he just, he was all about the good things in life and the great things about this state. And I, for one, am going to miss him. Those who haven't had a chance to know, get to know him, talk to somebody today and over the next week about who that man was, and celebrate his life and everything he gave to this house and to this state. We'll miss you, John.
The clerk will read the caption to a group of privileged resolutions.
Unnumbered House resolution by Representative Ralston, the seventh, Burns, the one hundred fifty-ninth, Jones, the forty-seventh, and others, honoring the life and memory of John Unnumbered House resolution by Representative Ralston, the seventh, Welch, the one hundred tenth, Reeves, the thirty-fourth, and others, honoring and remembering the life of honorable P. Harris Hines, former Chief Justice of the Supreme Court of Georgia and for other purposes.
We're going on now to announcements. We're going on now to announcements. Is there any objection to adopting the privileged resolutions? The Chair hears none, and the resolutions are adopted. We're going on now to announcements. Chair recognizes the Chairman of the Ways and Means Committee, Chairman Jay Powell, for an announcement.
The Income Tax Subcommittee of Ways and Means will meet downstairs in room one thirty-three at three o'clock this afternoon. The Sales Tax Subcommittee of Ways and Means will meet at one thirty-three at three-thirty this afternoon. And full committee will meet tomorrow sometime, and we will announce that, depending on what the two subcommittees do. So Subcommittee members will see you downstairs in about an hour.
Chair recognizes the Chairman of the House Appropriations Committee, Chairman England, for an announcement.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. You will find on your desk two or three documents we have placed there. One is the amended appropriations bill. Due to time and the time constraints, I'm going to ask you if you would please hold on to these, because this is, this may be the only copy that time permits for, for there to be made. And if you're looking for the changes, and there's, there's an easier way to find the changes than looking in the budget document, and that is looking in this recap. But as you look through the departments, you will see small boxes around the things that will be changed within those departments. But also, this document prepared by the Governor's Office of Planning a Budget tells you about the changes and the necessity for changes and additions throughout the budget that is being proposed. It also has several lines speaking to a couple of the tax bills that are being, or the tax bill that is being talked about. And I would ask that if you've got questions on the tax bill, see Chairman Powell. If you've got questions on the appropriations bill, I'm glad to try to fill those questions. You'll notice one of the items is going back into our self-insured fund for our property and casualty business, where we self-insure our own buildings. If you want to see the detail of how many buildings were damaged, I have that as well. So we've got a notebook that's been prepared by the Governor's Office that, that walks us through most everything that, that you can imagine. So one o'clock tomorrow afternoon will be the Appropriations Committee full meeting, full committee hearing. We will have the Governor, Commissioner Black, and several other folks and agencies that were directly impacted by the storm, that their agencies have been doing the work. We will hear from them at that point. And at that point, we will vote, vote the supplemental or the extraordinary special session appropriations bill out of committee at that point. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, thank you for saying that members could come ask you questions. Is your meeting open to other members that are not on appropriations?
Yes, our meeting will be open to anyone and everyone that's a member of the House and the general public as well.
Chairman Powell, same announcement. I would encourage those of you who may not be on appropriations and are interested in the budget to go to the meeting. You might learn something, and it might save fussing a little bit in a few days, but that you didn't have input. Ask questions, read the budget, read the tax bill. It's all out there, and it's open, and these two Chairmen will be helpful to you. So now's your opportunity. There being no other announcements, I want you to help me, join with me in wishing a happy birthday to Representative Jeff Jones, Representative Jones. Chair recognizes the Majority Leader of the House for a motion.
Mr. Speaker, I move that this House stand adjourned until ten a.m. Wednesday, November the fourteenth, twenty eighteen, ten a.m.
Majority Leader has moved that this House be adjourned until Wednesday morning, November fourteenth, at ten o'clock a.m. All those in favor of the motion will say aye. Those opposed will say no. The ayes clearly have it, this House will be adjourned until Wednesday, November fourteenth, at ten o'clock a.m.